The whole school community and the community at large be safe for all. Can you have any group talked about what sort of things would enhance our ability to support students' mental health and social emotional need?
When we wanted, it was rather exciting and it was exactly the way that we wanted it. We're hoping that it'll really make a difference and be an example for other schools to do great things as well.
I'm really hoping that it helps bring students together and get along with each other better in the school environment. As far as what's inside Wellness Center, what is your personal favorite aspect?
I call it the birdcage chair.
Honestly, my favorite part is probably the chairs. They have like these hanging like beanbag chairs.
The end chairs, they look really fun.
They're super, super comfy and they also have this really cool like massive lava lamp in the corner and they're super cool. I love it so much. Also love the huge giraffe coloring area. That would be, coloring for me is a great mindful activity in the first place. So I think that would be a fun place to just go and reset.
I always like to think of the Wellness Center as like the eye of the storm. Like the place where the storm could be raging around and that word in the middle is a safe eye.
There was research that we made here from Sony's School of Science, which is out the Wellness Center. This was Anthony Hassel, Audrey Osneck, and Alvin Bell. I'm recording for W C which has policy.
So first of all, that was fantastic. They were so professional on that day. And I believe they also, their footage got picked up by NBC News. Is that correct? So, well done. I think this was a great way to not only highlight all, how great that Wellness Center is. It is such a calming space. You enter there and immediately feel better. But also the, the great TV and production program that we have at the high school. So thank you to the two of you for coming in and doing that. And now, without further ado, we have the, we have Ms. Alexi who is running our Wellness Center along with some of the students that presented during the opening, grand opening on Tuesday that had some really great things to say and we were hoping that they would come and do that for everyone once again.
I'm Leila Spearman and I am a senior leader and yeah.
Oh, that's, that's it?
Okay, I'm Chloe Ray. I'm the president of Bring Change to Mine, which is a club that's focused on mental health. And Linnea was with me, Linnea Martenson, and she's my vice president, but she's sick right now.
I'm Jasmine Claraville and I am also a senior leader.
I'm Kristin Alexi. I am the program director of the New Wellness Center. And you know, we were actually just talking as we're waiting for the meeting to start about how many students have reached out for support so far. And it's really been sort of humbling to see that they really find this to be a safe and welcoming place for them. Thank you to the both of you for that wonderful video. It came out so beautifully. Thank you so much. And to these lovely ladies here for all of their support in the start of the Wellness Center. The student buy-in has been absolutely overwhelming and we couldn't do this without them. So I think that that is just, you know, a great way to start our program. To Dr. Principato and the grant writing team, thank you guys all so much. To Keith for putting together our Wellness Center. It's just, it really was a collaborative team effort and it's really honor, it's just an honor for me to be a part of that team. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all of you. This is really a pretty groundbreaking center, especially to be housed in a school space. There aren't a lot of those and it was infectious, the, the optimism and the, the things that the, the folks working in the Wellness Center can visualize and are hoping for, to come this year and, and as the, the program expands. So I'm really grateful to all of their really hard work and their dedication and really hopeful that it will be a wonderful resource for the high school and also then the middle school starting very shortly. I see big yeses from Ms. Alexi, so yes. Okay, so thank you again. Congrats to everyone on that. Next, we have a presentation from Dr. McDowell on the DEI initiatives that the district is working on.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and thank you for joining us tonight on this very important conversation around diversity, equity, and inclusion. Last month, we had lots of commentary, lots of discussion, and there were specific actions that were requested by the Board of Education in response to some of the feedback and some of the things that have manifested within our school community over the last several months. This is going to speak to some of those things and it's going to put us on a pathway for continued conversations. So when we think about diversity, diversity is not always about who's in the room. It's also about who's not in the room. And so when we think about many voices but one mission, we are a school community that is connected by almost 21,000 residents, 2,500 students, 544 faculty, staff, and interns, 18 board members, three communities, two districts, but one mission. And so when we think about this concept of diversity, equity, and inclusion, the lens that I'm going to ask for us to, to entertain for this presentation is to be able to feel, heal, and witness. First, we want to feel all the feelings. We want to explore them, embrace them, and not be paralyzed or consumed by them when they are uncomfortable. When we know better, we do better. We have to do this work with others and then ultimately if we expect grace to be shown, sometimes we're going to need to slow down. And so when we're tired and impatient, we may sometimes say things that we regret, but slowing down helps us to clarify intentions and then helps to understand the potential impact of our actions. And then the most important component in all of these things is that we're not going to be able to solve a 600-year problem in six months. And so when we think about, it is not our fault the way that things are, but it is our collective responsibility to do something about it. And so that's the lens in which we're engaging in this work. And so we want to pay honor to the work that has been done previously. So dating back to 2018, all the way up to 2020, we had an equity committee. Full disclaimer, we will be making all of the presentation, sending it out and be available on our district website tomorrow for those who want to read further. So we're not going to read slides to you, but we did want to honor previous work. We had an equity committee back starting in 2018. We had a district equity council in 2020. We also conducted an audit in partnership with Rowan University and their Center for Equity and Success in addition to my independent transition and, and review of the district through this lens of equity. And so all of those are, are the foundation for the work that then led for the development of our strategic plan, which was a six-month journey that started in 2021 and got us to June of 2022. And so when we think about our collective mission, our mission is by building on the strengths of our diverse community, we commit to providing an inclusive and supportive environment that inspires and empowers every student. So that's our mission. That's why we're all here. And so when we think about our strategic plan, our strategic plan identified seven core areas or specialties with the one that we're speaking of this evening, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that was approved in June of 2022. And so it takes a community in order to create community change. And so the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Action Team consisted of in-district administration. Primary goal is to further the integration of diversity, equity, and inclusion concepts into district culture by dismantling negative stigmas between elementary school communities, prioritizing sustainable pathways to diversify the educator pipeline, and developing the cultural competencies of our educators. And then there were some secondary goals, which are providing wraparound support in support of our primary goal, which is to further integrate DEI into district culture. And so we don't do this by ourselves. We do this at the school level. We do this at the district level. We do this at the board level. We also do this at the community level. And so these are a few things that Collingwood High School has done in response to this work. Targeted professional development and culturally responsive teaching and relationship building. A DEI committee really focused on what does this mean at Collingswood High School. Community events in order to bring people together because in order for this work to take place, we have to decrease the proximity and the distance that we are, that is separating us from coming together. And then ultimately, that what they've been engaged in for the last several months is action planning with a focus on one school and one community. And so the phase or the action items that I'm going to speak about tonight fall under three major categories. Policy, practices, and people. First, it starts with the top. So Phase One of our plan really aligns itself with leadership alignment. The Board of Education, the district leadership team, school administration, then faculty and staff. We have tried it in a different orders in years past. We're going to start with the top. We've identified and approved an initial agreement for Phase One of this approach, which is building the collective capacity and building leadership alignment between the Board of Education and the district leadership team. That work will begin in April. We've also identified some policies specific to this work in the areas of diversity, equity, anti-racism, code of conduct, substance abuse, drug screening, electronic communication, affirmative action, employee training, equal educational opportunity, equality in programming attendance, and ultimately Section 504. And so our goal is to take a look at these policies, begin that policy-level work with an aggressive agenda for policies to be changed and ready for implementation in September. Now, this is not the end-all-be-all of policies because there are hundreds of policies that we need to go through, but we've identified some very specific policies that we believe are going to help push this agenda forward. So why is policy the beginning stage? In order for us to understand disproportionality, we have to look at policy. And so the concept of disproportionality or disproportionate representation is when a certain group is either over or underrepresented in any specific area. So the example is that if 50% of all students are male, then that means that 50% of all suspensions should be male. If male students receive more than 50% of suspensions, then they are disproportionately overrepresented among students that are suspended. So that's the data. And so in this example, if students represent 50% of the population, but they represent 68% of students that are suspended, males are overrepresented among suspended students. What does that mean for Collingswood High School? When we look at who is overrepresented and underrepresented, we did a comparison of the total high school population at Collingswood and then we broke it down by suspended students, broken down by student group. And so what this shows is that there are two groups of students that are either over or underrepresented when it comes to suspensions. And so when we think about the, the number of students that are suspended, this does not include students that have received multiple suspensions, but the number of, of students that have been suspended at Collingswood High School up until when, February 3rd was 63 students. When we look at 63 students and you compare that with your student number percentages of population going down the line, 49% of students at Collingswood High School identify as white. 29% identify as Hispanic, 15% identify as black, 5% multiracial, and 2% Asian. When you compare that with the suspensions, 27% of the suspensions are white students, 29% are blacks, 38% are black students, 5% multiracial, and 1% Asian. So what that shows is that in this example, white students are underrepresented among students and black students are overrepresented among students. When you further unpack that, what that means is, is that black students are two and a half times likely to be suspended opposed to other student groups. So in this example, disproportionality does exist. Why is this slide important? Because when students are suspended, they miss valuable instruction. When we look at all students that have been suspended so far this year, that accounts for 360 days out of school. That means that 63 students have missed the equivalent of two years of school. So on average, a student misses at least a week. And when you further unpack that, this means that our black high school students are disproportionately missing more days of school due to suspension for varying reasons. We wanted to make sure that we are putting policies and practices in place to tackle this because when any student is missing school, it's a problem. Phase One also includes practices. So in order for us to, it's not good enough for us just to know better, we also have to do better. But in order to do better, we have to be trained, we have to be educated, we have to have tools, resources, and ongoing technical assistance. And so we have partnered with three organizations that are going to help us with some of that work. We're partnering with the New Jersey State Bar Association. They are going to be working on our campus, both at the middle and the high school level, really focused on training faculty, staff, and administration in restorative justice. That work begins on April 20th. We're also partnering with the Camden County Youth Services Commission, who will be, a parallel to this process, will be working hand-in-hand on the middle school and the high school campus, beginning restorative circles with an emphasis on healing and community building now. We know that there is tension on campus. We can't wait until next year to begin addressing the reparation of the relationships. And so that work will begin in April. In addition, we will also be partnering with the New Jersey Division of Civil Rights, who will be working with us and providing additional training, support, and education in the areas of bias. And so these are three critical partners that are going to help us with this work at the local school level. We have a diversity, equity, and inclusion consulting firm that'll be working at the board and the administrative level. We were also asked to look at people. And so when thinking about the pool of educators, 92% of the educators in Collingswood are not persons of color. And so when we think about the pool, there is a nationwide shortage of educators in general across the board. There is an even greater shortage of educators of color, not just in New Jersey, but within this entire region. And so what are we doing in order to support that work? We've already engaged the Center for Black Educator Development based out of Philadelphia. We're going to be working with them in order to build pipelines and build capacity to actively recruit, support, and bring African-American educators into the field and partner with our district. We've also already started with Diversity in Education, which is a diversity recruitment partner. And so we are now in spaces where diverse candidates are available. And so we're also working in that space. In addition, we have reached out and are seeking to partner with three of the regional HBCUs. So we've heard back from all three of those universities and we'll be setting up face-to-face meetings with their leadership team late April, early May in order to begin establishing continued rapport with the hope of building pipelines between those three institutions. We also believe it's important to talk with the folks who are here. And so over the last month, we've been conducting focus groups, primarily starting with our faculty and staff of color in order to ask them two key questions. The first question, what brought you to Collingswood? The second question, what keeps you here? Some of the key takeaways, they were attracted to the diversity of the student population. They saw Collingswood as an opportunity for career advancement and professional growth. And they also believed that they would be treated as professionals. On the flip side, they also acknowledged that there was much-needed growth in the areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion. They were also asking for more opportunities for upward mobility and they wanted there to be more district-level attention to the rebranding of the organization as a diverse organization that welcomes diversity. And so it's important for us to continue to engage our faculty and staff across the district, across all schools in order to better understand what their needs are so that we can continue to establish meaningful relationships and it can help us to refine our recruiting and retention plans. I was also fortunate to actually sit in on a meeting on March 7th between high school administration and the Black Student Union. The Black Student Union presented to the administration at that time, a call to action with a timeline. First, clear, consistent communication between administration and the complainants of HIBB and affirmative action complaints or investigations. Quarterly activities in place to be able to build an inclusive school community and to bring the three towns together in a meaningful way. Holding all students and staff accountable to the same standards within the code of conduct and being consistent with the implementation of the code of conduct. And then ultimately, asking for them to put up the chain to require annual cultural competence and restorative justice training for all faculty and staff with a due date of June 1st. They did not want this moment to pass without us being able to build some real capacity, which puts us on a better path for the following school year. So we're thankful to our leaders and, and the Black Student Union for having those ongoing discussions and being very concrete in what they're asking for. And finally, we do believe that if Collingswood is where you want to be, then we cannot continue to operate with a certain level of exclusivity. And so the, the general motto that I have, have shared in, in these types of environments is, is what's good for the borough is good for the district and what's good for the district is good for the borough. But taking a step further, we also need to make sure that we have a layer of accountability and a layer of ownership and opportunities for leadership among our community. So at this moment, I'm actually going to ask one of our community leaders, Bruce, to come up and, and share with us this final piece of the puzzle, which is a DEI committee. And Mr. Smith is going to share that with us at this moment.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Smith. I'm 311 Lakeview. I've been in Collingswood for 11 years.
How do you use my phone?
Sorry. 311 Lakeview. We've lived in Collingswood for 11 years. I have a 12-year-old and a four-year-old who obviously goes to school in the district. About three years ago during COVID and after the George Floyd incident, people from the school district reached out to all the parents, asking to start an anti-racism parent group. There's a lot of people in this room who joined the group that was part of it. And we were putting together a list of questions to ask the district, what were we doing about these issues that we're talking about today? Like everything else and like our lives with COVID, it kind of got away from us and we didn't have the opportunity to follow up on it. And then over the last couple of months, with everything that's taking place, we decided to not only restart that parent-community group, but we've also worked together with the board and with Dr. McDowell to start a diversity, equity, inclusion committee that includes people from the board, from the staff administration, from the community, from the borough to help us strive to tackle some of these things a little bit better. As myself, I work in finance, but I've been the chair of DEI committees for the last two companies I've been with for 10 years. And I'm on the board of Perkins here in Collingswood. So me and my family are heavily invested in the success of this town. One of the things that we wanted to bring all together about the presentation was, you know, we all recognize that the last few months, this meeting and these town halls have been tough. And as tough as they've been, it is also exciting that we live in a community where people, staff can come out and speak to those elected officials and say, how do you really feel and how do you really think? Because that's how this system is supposed to work. And although it's our duty to address all these items, it's important that we do this with respect without disparaging people and that the success of this board and the superintendent is success for our kids. And the success of the parents who are involved is success for our kids. And that's why we felt so strong about coming here because striving for diversity and equity keeps us honest to the town creed of Collingswood is the place you want to be for everyone. Whether you're black, whether you're Hispanic, whether you're transgender. whether you're black, whether you're Hispanic, whether you're transgender. In order to reflect on that, you know, we've heard words used such as racism, bigotry, hate, silence, antisemitic, words that if used carelessly can cause mass destruction and its power can be limitless. The only thing more powerful than those words are love, empathy, sympathy, and togetherness. Those words can deliver hope and unity. And although there are exceptions to all roles, it was very clear for me that I stated that the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee was not created because we're operating in the belief that Collinswood is a racist town. It is not. Institutions can be, but that doesn't mean that's what the people are. That being said, I would challenge anyone to find a problem with the community and the district striving to be more diverse, more equitable, and more inclusive. The 80% that we agree on is so much stronger than the 20% that seems to divide us. If one child of color does not feel safe or heard, we must do more. If one transgender kid does not feel safe, we must do more. And if one teacher says that they don't have the tools or the resources to celebrate ethnic holidays or months, then we must do more. The committee and some main highlights is, everything that Dr. McDowell went over will also be presented to this committee, and it will be the responsibility of that portion of that committee to go back to their groups. So it would be the responsibility of the board members to go back to the board and say, this is what this committee talked about, this is what they would like to see. It will be the responsibility of the community group to go back to the parent groups and say, this is what's going on, this is what we're working towards. Some of the goals is addressing the discipline statistics that Dr. McDowell went over, talking about the professional development for staff and admin, working together to create a culture and a process for hiring more staff of color. And our first order of business is the collaboration with the borough to do a community-wide Unity Day celebrating Juneteenth this year. We may all differ on the vehicle to get us to the same destination, but we all want the same, and it's important that everybody knows that we all have allies here. A lot of people I don't know personally, but we just went through an election, and I would like to be the first to say, Kelly, Maya, and Megan Mikowski are people who signed their name on the ballot and want nothing more than the success of this town. And our police chief, Kevin Carey, was on the parents' anti-racist group, but also created his own diversity group, marched during Black Lives Matter, and I can assure you that he loves this town and the school district and wants nothing more for our town to be equitable. I met Roger Chu, who showed up for an anti-racist parent group, and Roger has no children, but no one wants equality more through equity than Roger. Kate pushed for answers to questions that she couldn't get, and she just decided to put her name on the ballot because she wanted to serve. I'm saying this because it's important that everybody knows that we may disagree, and that will happen, and out of disagreement comes great things. But the 80% unites us more than it divides us. Reagan, transplant from New York City, decided the year that she moved here that she was going to be part of the community, and if her kids were going to be part of the system, that she was going to serve. That was 10 years ago. Our love of town, our respect for our neighbors, and our goals for our kids and their future must outweigh those who choose to divide us. I look forward to what the future holds with this committee and raising our kids in a diverse, equitable, and inclusive community.
So thank you, Mr. Smith. One final, so it's important for us to talk about components, deliverables, and next steps. And so the first component in this presentation is really around implementation support, which starts with Phase One level of DEI training between the Board of Education, District Administration, and eventually Building Administration to receive that foundational level of training. That training begins in April, with administrator training later in the summer. The re-establishment or the establishment of the DEI committee with an emphasis on community building. The deliverables that you just heard of, one of the big deliverables would be the Juneteenth Community Unity Day, and also an emphasis on promoting policies that supports the DEI work school-community-wide. First meeting is already scheduled for April 5th. Board of Education recommendations and policy revisions. We've identified the first round of specific policies aligned with Phase One of this DEI work. Our goal is for a first read to take place in May, a second reading to take place in June, for us to build capacity throughout the summer, and then implement these new policies and these new practices effective in September. Staff retention, educator focus groups, identifying factors to attract diverse faculty and staff, as well as where are there areas where we need to improve. With the next step being increasing the frequency of staff check-ins with a focus on overall staff retention and recruitment. In the area of recruitment around educator pipelines, we're going to continue exploring our partnership with the Center for Black Educator Development in order to learn about best practices in recruiting black educators, both in this region and beyond, continue partnering with Diversity in Ed recruitment platform, in addition to fully exploring the relationship with the identified historically black colleges and universities within our region. Those follow-up meetings are scheduled for April and May. At the middle school and the high school level, because we believe it's important for us to wrap around support while we're building collective capacity, Tier One, which is community building in terms of restorative justice in schools, is already scheduled for April 20th. And so we will be, during the school day, we will be training committed faculty and staff at the middle and the high school level. They will be Phase One of our leaders helping to usher in new conversations on campus. In September, we will do Tier Two, which is response to harm. And so we didn't, we wanted to, one of my mentors used to share with me, sometimes you have to go slow to go fast, and so we wanted to make sure that we're doing this right. And so we're breaking up the training as not to overwhelm our faculty and our staff and our administrators, who are already doing a phenomenal job, given the circumstances that they're operating in. And so response to harm will be scheduled for sometime in September, after we've gotten school started. We will continue to review feedback and provide training opportunities to more staff based on what we've learned from this first cohort of leaders on campus. In addition, we will be running in April, beginning in April, affinity groups. Affinity groups are restorative circles of students, staff, and administrators to be able to come together. While we're building capacity for us to eventually run our own circles and continue that work unassisted, we didn't want to delay that work, and so our partners are going to come in and actually help us begin the repairing of those relationships, starting in April, so that by June, we're in a much better place, and we have a better opportunity coming back in September after the summer. And so we will continue to review participant feedback and then provide additional opportunities for more students and more staff to participate once we come back in September. And so the last thing that I would like to share to close up this presentation is that we already have two examples of what happens in Collinswood when we embrace diversity. First, when we think about our elementary schools, I can say this pretty wholeheartedly because out of our five elementary schools, we have two of the five of our elementary schools are some of the best in the state of New Jersey. There are 1,370 elementary schools in New Jersey, and we are the proud recipients of number 49 and number 98. Neurodiversity with Zane North, and then the most diverse elementary school in our district is Garfield, both linguistically, ethnically, and socioeconomically, and they are two of the best. And so we already know what it looks like, and so when you ask, what are they doing differently? They're coming together as a community, they're not running when the going gets tough, and their community is bearing fruit. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were leaving on a positive note, because this is what happens when we embrace diversity. Thank you for listening, and thank you for the opportunity with the Board of Education.
We're going to go into Committee of the Whole to allow for board members to discuss things a bit more. So can I have a motion to enter Committee of the Whole?
Submoved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we, that feels very loud. We asked Dr. McDowell at last month's board meeting to basically present to us what he did about various goals that we had set for the district moving forward, and so wanted to provide an opportunity for board members, this is the first time that we're all be able to come together to discuss the presentation. So wanted to open it up to questions or comments that board members have.
Move closer here, excuse me. First of all, thank you for the time, attention, and just how comprehensive that report was and everything that you looked into there. I know that this work has been going on for a long time, and I think it was a good balance of what has led us to here, what the work that has been happening, and what we can look forward to seeing in the future. I think one of the things I would love to hear just a little bit more about is something around some of the feedback that we've been getting around when we set a policy, and then it either being over or under, particularly around code of conduct and holding expectations for behavior. I think we've seen it kind of go to opposite extremes throughout the course of the year, and I think that sometimes it can be hard, particularly when you're looking at the discipline disparity data that was up there, to know how to act when behavior is not, when behavior is reaching a point where the rules say you should be suspended for this. And I know that that then falls on administrators and educators or teachers to know when that is, and that can be very hard, obviously, in the moment as well. So anything you could talk about with the professional development, the support, the ways that the board can continue to help in this, just so that we know that at least that part of the, from policy to implementation, isn't being missed?
So yes, so it's going to be, it's going to be multi-tiered. And so when we think about what's our responsibility? Our responsibility within any code of conduct is to help educate students into making better choices, but to have a policy in place when a poor choice is sometimes made. One of the core or mandates around the restorative work is there have to be greater levels of options, paired with the sometimes need for suspensions to take place. And currently, our educators disproportionately at the secondary campus, don't have that level of flexibility. And so when we think about our educators, they're, one of the things that I can say about our team is that they follow the rules. And so we're not lowering expectations. What we believe is the right course of action is to give our educators more options and to give them greater levels of flexibility and discretion when it comes to the implementation or the administration of a code of conduct. For example, if there is a student that, we have a pretty stringent substance abuse policy. If a student gets caught with an illegal substance, they are suspended five days. There's no opportunity for a diversionary program, there's no expectation around drug education, there is not a formal expectation around a support plan. And so in the anecdotal, if I am caught on campus smoking marijuana, I go home and get to smoke marijuana for the next five days, opposed to there being an opportunity for us to be able, or for the school to be able to work differently through either partners, programs, or some other form, which could also begin to address some of those things. And so when we began bringing in some of the partners around the restorative work, one of the recommendations that they gave us in conjunction with building capacity to be able to train folks is to look at our policies and to make sure that our policies had embedded restorative language and restorative opportunities, which then helps to, for one, it helps to increase student adherence to some of the policies because they don't look at them as so stringent, and there's a glimpse of opportunity for students who happen to sometimes make poor choices. And it also gives administrators, faculty, and staff more options in its totality, looking at each student on a case-by-case basis. And so what I would say is, when you pair that with us being able to increase our capacity through the Wellness Center, the Wellness Center is not a, the purpose of the Wellness Center is not to manage discipline. The Wellness Center is to help to address building faculty and staff capacity while also helping to support the mental health concerns of students, and sometimes mental health concerns manifest in ways that may, or that may lead into a suspension or further disciplinary action. When you pair that with our counseling team, pre-Wellness Center launch, our counselors have been working double and triple duty, trying to fill that void for multiple years, they have exceeded their capacity. And so when our counselors are allowed to do counseling work, when our Wellness Center is allowed to do the wellness work, when we have restorative language within our code of conduct, when we have individuals that are trained in restorative conversations and less punitive practices, culture improves, behavior improves, and so we're looking at this from multiple directions.
If we do implement these policies that give administrators more discretion and, you know, restorative justice and everything, is there going to be like an oversight committee to make sure that it's being implemented fairly across the student population? Because you see that, you know, students of color are disproportionately suspended, you know, are we digging a little bit deeper into that to see whether or not they're meeting out discipline fairly, or we're just looking at the raw numbers? Does that make sense?
It does. And so the initial, the initial layer of review comes from my office. And so, but we have to make sure that there is an expectation and that the tools are in place that then allows for the disproportionality to eventually subside and become more balanced. In addition, bringing in external stakeholders that can also help hold us accountable, like the DEI committee, that's another layer. The Board of Education is an additional layer, and so it's going to take all of us looking at not just that issue, but looking at all of these issues, and redirecting our attention and creating real systems of accountability aligned with those things.
Now, I know you said that we have some trainings coming up, like the New Jersey Bar Association's going to be doing restorative justice training. Who is that, is that mandatory training, or is it just people who opt in?
And so thanks to CEA leadership, thanks to the high school and middle school administrative team, we asked for them to make recommendations of leaders who were ready, willing, and able to take the plunge and really wanted to help usher in new conversations on campus. And so they gave us a list, and that's the list that we are recommending and asking to participate for the first round. What we believe is, is that once we begin to start seeing success, more individuals will get involved because they will actually have a model to go off of, and that will be the, will be infectious. And so initial recommendations came from the schools based on individuals who had either expressed interest, expertise, or both.
Considering the emphasis on the restorative justice practices that will be implemented in the high school, what kind of resources will be available for the staff besides, beyond the training? What kind of resources will be available to really implement that very immersive type of policy, especially considering some of the budgetary issues we are currently facing?
So the overwhelming majority of those resources are at no cost. And so our partners are coming in, they're not just bringing in training, they're also bringing in resources and ongoing technical assistance.
And just to follow up, would resources include their staff members that will be able to be on campus to really help the staff and support them in these, in these trainings?
So the State Bar Association is primarily going to equip with the tools and the training. The ongoing technical assistance and the boots on the ground is actually coming from Camden County Youth Services, who are active partners with New Jersey State Bar. And so in working alongside the Camden County Office of Education through the Executive County Superintendent, she connected me with resources, and then we did our due diligence to find, to find which of the resources would be most appropriate to Collingswood. And so these are partners that are coming in that are willing to walk alongside us.
One, one thing too, just quickly, there was also, we talked about the Department of Education has a grant around restorative justice that was through Kane University, and is something that we can apply for. It was a pilot from the past few years, but that is something that I would like to see, like, as we're applying to the different grants and finding different ways that we can bring in money and resources, I think that is one of the avenues we're also going to explore, particularly for helping to get this started and then continued support, and then that will come with some support from the university as well.
Also want to just echo the thanks for the comprehensive nature of the presentation and to, and to Bruce Smith for his stepping up as a community member. That's no small thing, so thank you very much, Bruce. So, you know, like, I think you did a nice job of showing us sort of what was going on in the, in the communities before now, right? And clearly, there's, there's some really good work that was going on before this point. So I was wondering if there was any, any work being done at your level to sort of figure out, you know, what was that work that was before, what was going well? Who were the people in the buildings who were really taking on that work? What did they do? What can they continue to do? I think so much of this happened where, like, COVID really stalled a lot of those initiatives. I don't think it's for lack of trying. So just wondering, like, is there a bridge between not throwing out the baby with the bathwater and retaining some of that talent and energy that I know so many staff have, but also bringing in new initiatives as well?
So when we talk about individuals that are seeking to usher in a change and a new conversation, these are individuals that have been actively engaged in this work for many years. And so most of the individuals that are going to be going in for some of the refresher training, participating on the DEI Committee, doing work on their campus are part of the, those foundational groups that started that work all the way back in 2018. And so we're, we're, we're learning from what happened before, but then trying to take it to the next level. And so we were doing things historically in pockets, and so we're now trying to bring all of those things together in a, in a more aligned way, in a more systemic way. But no, we're not ignoring the, the leaders that are still here that did a lot of that work in the past, including board members who were on most of those committees.
Yeah, I guess I'd want to, Dr. McDowell, thank you for, I want to thank you for the presentation, and also Mr. Smith for the presentation as well. I guess I just wanted to mention that. I wanted to, I guess, point to that, in my experience, rightfully or wrongfully, this type of work surrounding diversity, equity, inclusion oftentimes falls upon the shoulders of those who, who it would affect the most. So in this case, two black men who just spoke about efforts that this district is making to address diversity, equity, inclusion. And so I, I wanted to always acknowledge that this is difficult work that both you and Mr. Smith have, as black men, have stepped up to the plate to continue to do. And, and I want to put my thanks out there for that.
I just had one final thing.
Go for it.
On that last chart, there was a lot of dates. So if people wanted to get involved, will there be something going out or so that people could get involved in, in those multiple things? Like, that, I think that there were things that people could get involved with. Am I wrong? Was, did I read that wrong?
Yeah, so the, the work of the DEI Committee, that's, and I, I hope I'm not being premature, Mr. Smith, but that'll be discussed by the committee during their kickoff meeting. There will be opportunities for individuals to get involved. I'm just not sure what those opportunities are yet. Yeah.
So, I think everyone said everything that I was thinking about with the, appreciate the detail and the complexity of the presentation, but also of the situation that we're in. And I'm glad that we have, you know, plans for what we're doing, but we're also recognizing that we've got a lot of good people in place that we can lean on to, to help us implement those plans because they've already been, we know they've been doing the work with us from, from the get-go. So appreciate all of that. Excuse me. I wanted to shift, to take a moment to shift a little bit to also discuss the, the safety and security issues that continue to be an issue at the high school. I think we would be remiss if we did not discuss that as well. So, Dr. McDowell, could you talk to us a little bit about what, help us put it in a little bit of context, I guess, and then as, as well as what next steps are to continue working to address those issues?
So, yes, in, in terms of safety, probably not going to, we will be sending out this, this information to the public, but want to speak specifically to, some of the information has continued to circulate. And so I, I think that it's important for us to acknowledge that whenever there is any level of physical confrontation, that is not good. So physical confrontation, it happens in high schools, but just because it happens doesn't mean that we should accept that as to be the norm. And so we are being very mindful of what has transpired this year and previous years. And so I just want to share just a few pieces of data, just so that it encapsulates the way that we're thinking about these, these things. And so the board asked for us to do an analysis of physical altercations exclusively at the high school. And so we went back multiple years, all the way back to 2016. And so 2016, 17, there were 17 altercations. 17, 18, 23. 18, 19, 22. 19, 20, the year of the shutdown, nine. 2021, during remote instruction, virtual learning, zero. 21, 22, 17. And year-to-date, here, eight. And so when we think about physical confrontation, there are a whole host of reasons why students are in active conflict with each other, and none of them are justified. And so our collective goal is to figure out why are students having, deciding to solve personal conflict physically, and how do we support them in order to make better decisions? Ultimately, one of the other core components, and it is of great concern to us, is making sure that not just students are safe, but also faculty and staff are safe. And so there have been several incidents in the last several months that are of great concern to us. We are working in partnership with the high school, in partnership with our association leaders, in order to put a better pathway forward, which increases levels of supervision in the hallways, in the cafeterias, in non-structured spaces by increasing administrator presence, security presence, and communication capability in order to make sure that there is less distance between the adults and the students that sometimes make poor decisions. And so when we think about safety and security, we are going to continually look at what our supervision model looks like until we get it right. And so I've been in active discussion with building administration as well as association leadership, and we're going to be working in partnership between my office and those two entities in order to make sure that the high school has the resources, the support, and the advocacy that they need in order to make sure that students and staff are safe on campus. We are also in the process of working out the details of a shared service agreement with the Borough of Collingswood, specifically Collingswood Police Department. To be able to provide meaningful levels of service and support across all schools in Collingswood, details will be forthcoming in the next several months.
Yeah, and I think that's, oh, sorry, just real quick, I just think that's an important point that I was going to add that if you didn't, because we've learned in our discussions with administration and staff over the past couple of months that, I mean, this isn't a big surprise, that of course, all of the, the emotions and issues and feelings that are resulting in some of these poor choices and some of these actions that are causing harm are not starting and ending in the school building, right? Like, it's often something that happens on a Monday because of things that had happened over the weekend, or something that happened on social media that, that comes into the school building as well. And so a stronger partnership with the Borough and our police department to, to kind of be all-inclusive of tackling these issues is, I think, really important and a really important resource for us to utilize. So just wanted to add that in. Go ahead, Mary.
I just had a question. When you said increase supervision by administrators and staff, will that require those administrators or staff to be relieved of other duties or just a reassignment of not, so they will not, does that make sense?
It, it does. And so our, our administrative team, it's just, we're just, you're changing the flow of your day. And so the primary, the most vulnerable times throughout the day are four-minute intervals, and it's during passing time, and also during lunch. And so we want to make sure that there's an increased presence in the hallways, specifically in the, in the highest-traffic areas, to make sure that the educators on those halls have the support that they need, and that there is a, enough of an adult presence to keep everybody honest.
I'd like to, I guess, make sure this doesn't go off. Yeah, I think, here. So that, that shared services agreement with, with the Borough, I did want to go back to it to discuss it a little bit more, because I know I've been in some of those discussions, and I think might be helpful to clarify that. The idea here is that, that there are a lot of different, I guess, organizations that touch students' lives, right, that are outside of the school, and students bring their outside lives into the school as well. And part of what I think we've been discussing is a need to be able to coordinate with services that, that are other government services, that when things do happen outside of the school, so that our staff and our administrators inside the school district understand the full context of what a student is experiencing and bring with themselves to, to school on a given day if needed. And so I think that, that's important to bring up because this is not necessarily saying that we need cops in school, right? This is saying that we need to have better coordination between the different governmental entities that do touch a student or family's life and not just our, our own, because we're not operating within a vacuum, we're operating within a community on, on many of these issues.
So we are a, a district that is multi-jurisdictional. And so when we think about the three-member towns, if, if have you, but we also have young people across a dozen different communities. And so there are always going to be shades of gray, there are always going to be factors that come from outside of the school that, that comes into the school. And our, our building administrators have expressed the need to have additional resources, additional support, and a liaison to help them navigate specifically as it relates with juvenile services that are beyond the scope of, of what they're here to do. And so we believe that by partnering with the Borough in this way, we can provide that extra layer of support to all of our buildings by giving them that additional resource. And so that's how we've evolved it. What it is not is having a, a school resource officer assigned to the high school campus. That is not where the conversation has evolved into. It's really looking a bit more holistically. That does not mean that there will not be opportunities for Borough officials to be on campus when working with faculty and staff and administration, but they won't exclusively be here in this building.
And I do want to, I guess, comment my, my support for having stronger coordination between the, the different organizations and services. I spent many years as a research partner for organization in Pennsylvania that supported education inside juvenile justice facilities through Pennsylvania's public and private juvenile justice centers. And one of the key issues in those environments was the lack of coordination, communication, and that educators had a difficult time providing the services needed because there was lack of communication between the different entities. And so again, that's just, you know, very much supportive of this idea of being able to get more communication going between our school district and the larger community.
Dr. McDowell, I have a question. You said there were eight reported incidents of physical violence this year. I think we have the TikTok effect, that it seems like a lot more. And, and I know the vast majority of kids don't get into these physical altercations. However, I think the vast majority of these kids have been impacted by these physical altercations. So is there anything being done at the school to increase the sense of community, to, to try to address, you know, the student group as a whole, rather than, you know, we're just reacting to watching TikTok, and the kids don't seem to be supported?
So, I mean, you're, you're absolutely right. So the difference between 2023 and 2016 is the continued utilization of social media, the continued recording of life. And so that has exacerbated that, that situation. And so I shared earlier that our, our counseling department has been working overtime for many, many years. And so whenever things bubble up on campus, it generally hits their door first. And so we now have additional levels of support through the Wellness Center for any student that's experiencing anxiety or has been traumatized. And so we believe that, that the Wellness Center is going to provide some valuable tools, but also we believe that by shifting our focus and becoming a school with an emphasis on restorative justice and bringing students and staff together to be able to process these things in a more meaningful way, we believe that will help reduce some of the conflict. We also are going to be leveraging additional partners. We're not prepared to speak about them with specificity today, but we do believe that the time has come for us to increase opportunities around peer mediation and conflict resolution. And generally, those initiatives are best served when students lead them. And generally, those initiatives are best served when students lead them. And so we're looking into how do we bring some of those components also.
The one other thing I wanted to, I didn't want to forget for us to do during committee of the whole, unless there is more that anyone wanted to say on this specific topic, was just to ask, we have our attorney is here tonight, Mr. Betley, and we had asked at the last meeting that, and this was a concern of the students as well, that the affirmative action investigations, or, excuse me, the affirmative action complaints that were filed be investigated with fidelity, and that is not something that we can give very much detail on, but he happens to be here tonight, so can just give a very high level.
Sure. Again, my name is Joe Betley, I'm the attorney for the school district. I was asked by administration to conduct several affirmative action investigations of complaints raised by students. I'm not going to get into the details of those complaints because of obvious privacy reasons as well as personnel issues. I've done many interviews of witnesses and complainants, and my report is being drafted. I expect that report to be given to the superintendent on my findings and recommendations. He will then take that recommendations, issue his own findings, whether accept or reject, and then the individuals will be notified of the superintendent's decision. But it's been an ongoing process. All the people who I've interviewed have cooperated with my investigation, and again, it's being drafted and will be sent to the superintendent in the next few days.
Thank you. With that, can I get a motion to exit committee of the whole? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Moving on to section five, future dates and miscellaneous information, I just wanted to highlight a few key dates. April, Wednesday, April 5th will be the high school, these high school students coming to Woodlands Shadow Day, so that is something for high school students to look out for. The Always Fun New B PTA Basket Rapple is Friday, April 21st, so mark your calendars. It is actually not on here, but Monday, April 24th is our next public board meeting, and it is the one where we will have the presentation on the budget, so that is one to look out for as well. And please come and take part on Tuesday, April 25th, in the High Schools Culture Fest. I know they have been working hard on that, at 6:00 PM right here. Moving on to section six, routine board business, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 2023 regular board meeting and the March 13th, 2023 budget board meeting? And a second? Roll call? Why can't I remember this? All in favor? Okay. Moving on to section seven, which is our first opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying comments may be made at the end of the public comment section. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators, or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expected to do so with the utmost sensitivity to everyone in attendance. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there's a strict five-minute time limit, excuse me, per person during public comment. Please remember to come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Stacy. I live at 944 Oriental Avenue. I'm Riley Stacy's mother. I'm reading this statement on behalf of my husband Scott, Stacy, and myself. First, I just want to say I'm sad to be changing the tone of this positive meeting, and so proud of the voices of our students who have actually driven the work that the superintendent spoke of. I'm sad and dismayed that I have to stand here tonight and defend my daughter against questionable actions by the board president and vice president. Riley is a well-respected student and Collingswood resident. She's taken every opportunity over her entire school career to lead and advocate for positive change in this district. She is admired and accomplished. She's worked very hard, and with the support of some really special faculty members in this building and administrators, she was accepted to her dream college this year. Right now, she should be enjoying the remainder of her senior year and continuing to advocate for positive change in the district as a student representative, along with Aiden DeMarco to the Board of Ed. But last week, she and Aiden resigned from the board. She's never quit anything before. She resigned because last Wednesday afternoon, she was called into a meeting with Ms. Caden and Mr. Craig. Mr. Whalen, Vice Principal of the high school, is also a very supportive presence to them. During that meeting, Riley and Aiden were blindsided with accusations of violating the code of ethics for school board members. Riley was told that, and I quote, "As members of the board, you need to be held accountable to the ethics code. And then also, you're also not privy to executive sessions, so you really don't know what's going on." She was also told, she and Aiden, that people who come to board meetings with an agenda are deemed untrustworthy. When Riley agreed that she didn't believe the superintendent's contract should be renewed, she was asked, "Which teachers would you like us to fire to pay for Dr. McDowell's severance?" These comments are grossly inappropriate. Who's violating ethics here? Who has an agenda? That's my question. Riley has never been called untrustworthy, and she does know what's going on here, and so do we. Riley and Aiden are being silenced for speaking their minds. She did speak out against a contract renewal for the superintendent. She has every right to. Her statements were respectful and based in evidence, comments from students and teachers regarding the worsening school climate. In fact, following this comment at the January meeting, Ms. Caden thanked the student representatives for their report and also for standing out what they believed in. So apparently, the board member, the board president is in a rough spot here, and now wants to silence our student representatives. What exactly is the purpose and expectations of the student representatives? No document exists explaining their responsibilities and expectations of this role. Riley was under the impression that her role was to provide insight into school culture and community, and to give the board representatives a sense of what being on the ground at school is like, the climate of the school, if you will. It is obvious now that is not the case. What started out as an exciting opportunity for our daughter to participate and learn from the Board of Education this year has become disappointing and stressful-ridden experience for her. Thank you wholeheartedly to Mr. Whalen for being a supportive presence during a meeting that should not have happened. So where do we go from here? We're requesting an apology from the board president to Riley and Aiden. Secondly, we like to encourage community and other board members to really think about whether this is the kind of board leadership our town needs right now. Rather than spending time investigating students, let's spend our time addressing issues of bullying, fighting, racial inequities, and low teacher morale. Thank you.
Jennifer DeMarco, 311 Laurel Landing. Good evening. My name is Jen DeMarco, and I'm Aiden DeMarco's mom. Unfortunately, I'm limited tonight on how much I am able to say at the moment, but I wanted to introduce myself.
Thank you.
And show support for my son. I'll begin by saying that those three vacant student representative seats at your table tonight speak much louder right now than if they were filled. Therefore, your intent to silence them is failing. Those seats were filled with students who cared about their school, the district, their fellow students, educators, and faculty members' voices. Aiden was asked how many teachers they should fire to fund the superintendent's severance package. I'm ashamed of you for asking my son that question. As a former elected official, I'm embarrassed by your lack of professionalism in your position, and as a mother yourself, you can appreciate my disappointment in another mother. I would like to pose this question in response. How many teachers will it take to leave? And how many students will it take to transfer to other school districts before our district collapses?
My name is Riley Stacy, 944 Oriental Ave. I've come up to speak tonight not entirely to address the members of the board, but also to make the community aware of my unique experience with the board. Sorry, my back is too weak. I'm sure that many of the people in the audience tonight, and especially now after those two speeches, are aware of my and my co-representatives' resignations, as well as our motivation for such a drastic move. I'm less here to harp on that situation and more here to express my utter disappointment with the culture of the board, as well as how that affects our school community. When I was sworn into my student representative position, I had no real idea what I was doing. We spent the first few months doing what we thought our job was and hoping it worked, as we were never explicitly told what our role even was. There was never any communication from the board until we raised an uncomfortable point pertaining to the health of our school culture, instead of presenting the score of last night's football game. This presentation was eventually met with accusations of ethical violations and the pushing of an agenda from the board attorney. How were these accusations founded? We weren't given that information. Instead, we were brought into a meeting without knowing what the content would be, blindsided with the information, and intimidated by adults. No parents were present, and if it weren't for our advisor, Mr. Whalen's presence, there would be no one to vouch for our experience. So I'm disappointed that the school district I love and have spent my whole life in is led by people who think that the intimidation of children is okay. I'm disappointed that my co-representative and I were deemed untrustworthy by the president of the board for speaking our minds. I'm disappointed that the president asked us which teachers we wanted to fire to pay for the superintendent's severance package when we expressed dissatisfaction with his performance. And I'm disappointed that there are administrators, teachers, and other school staff who have to rely on the board's decision-making to do their jobs. It's shameful. I'm disappointed that I feel like my only viable option to send a powerful message to the board is to resign, to give up a position that is supposed to amplify student voice and allow the board to get an insight on what it's like to attend a Collingswood public school. Quite frankly, I'd love to see any board member spend a day at CHS. Maybe they'd gain some perspective that way. It's disappointing that I feel this jaded due to this entire situation at the ripe age of 17. During Wednesday's meeting, the president and vice president kept insisting that this situation could be a learning opportunity for Aiden and I, and they were right. But I learned nothing from them or from their behavior. Rather, from the people who have gathered around the two of us in the past week, I've learned how to be a caring, supportive person. I have nothing but gratitude for the school faculty, friends, family, and community members who have rallied around us since that last meeting. They are the only reason we still see a point in defending our district. For the board, though, all I have is disappointment.
My name is Aiden DeMarco, 105 Congress Ave, Oakland, New Jersey. I would like to open this up by saying I have been taught by some of the most outstanding teachers and individuals I will ever meet in my life. I have learned to always speak up for the truth, to do what is right for your community, to care about others, and to never, ever give up because you can do it. I come here to ask all the members of the Board of Education to do the same thing, speak up for the truth, and to do what is right for your community. What I want to make clear tonight is that I do not view my resignation as a student representative as giving up on the school community. I view my resignation as a path for me to have the ability to put my focus on issues in the district where my voice will be the most effective and heard. Sadly, I do not believe that my voice was being heard as a student representative by the Board of Education. Our students deserve better, our teachers deserve better, and our staff deserve better. I hope the members of the Board of Education open their eyes and act swiftly to prevent the damages being done to this district by the current superintendent, because our school district has the opportunity to move forward, but moving forward will require the Board of Education to make consequential decisions when it comes to district leadership. We will not see a path forward as a district with a superintendent that calls student representatives foolish and childish, or with one that feels that he has bent over backward to accommodate staff and feels he has been too transparent. We will also not see a path forward as a district with Board of Education leadership that pulls students down in a school day to discuss legal matters without parents or legal representation present and who makes inappropriate comments in a hostile tone towards student representatives, including asking which teachers we want to fire to pay for the student's severance package. The Board of Education president mentioned a few times to my co-representative and myself at the private meeting on March 22nd that hopefully, our actions as student representatives would be a lesson learned for both of us. Yes, it was a lesson learned. I learned to never let anyone push me around. I learned to never let anyone push me around and to always use my voice when I am fighting for what is right. I do not believe I had to learn a lesson, though, from that meeting. Those who deserve to learn a lesson from that meeting are the Board of Education president and vice president for holding such an inappropriate meeting, and I hope you do learn a lesson. Sadly, I have realized that sometimes students and young individuals tend to be more like the adults in the room, while the adults tend to act more like children in the room. To close, I would just like to express how deeply disappointed I am in this Board of Education and superintendent. It hurts me to even think about what this school district will look like next year with the path we are on as teachers leave to go to other school districts that welcome them with open arms because of the issues we face in this district. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Brenda Morkowski. I live at 106 Harvard Avenue. I am wanting to address a couple items that were on the agenda. First of all, that information that was presented from the superintendent about the rate and frequency of physical altercations back through 2016 was very enlightening, and it was a huge relief. And I wish that I had heard that sooner than today, but I imagine that that information will be shared shortly, so thank you for that. I know the community at large has a lot of worried minds, so I look forward to seeing that presented in a larger format. And then I also want to speak to two other items on the agenda that I consider to be pretty great news. As an earlier speaker said, this is a good, really positive meeting because of what I consider to be two very wonderful gifts that are very personally important to me as a parent in this district. I am parent to two young black men that are here in Collingswood School District. I have one that is a fourth grader at Tatum, and I have one that is in public pre-K at Sharp. And two things that I want from my children, more than anything else, are wellness and racial justice, and that was the substance of this meeting, and I'm just really, really First of all, you know, I have such young kids that maybe you might wonder, like, what do I know about high school? But when I look at my children and what they've experienced so far in Collingswood Public School, I think about the powerful tool of the calm-down corner, and I've wondered, what happens to my son, who is now approaching tween, who, you know, still needs to calm down sometimes, and is on the cusp of being viewed as a black man, not as an early childhood cutie pie? He's losing his chubby cheeks, his legs are getting longer, and he could really use a calm-down corner. And I think the Wellness Center is that for all of us. I think we could all use a calm-down corner. I think that we spend a lot of time working on emotional regulation in early childhood, but emotional regulation is hard today for me, and I am 43 years old. So where's my calm-down corner? Where's my Wellness Center? But all of that is to just make light of the fact that I think the Wellness Center is a really powerful tool, and I'm really, really excited about it. I think about the increasingly complex and often frightening world that my children live in. I think about the trauma that they and their peers have experienced through a global pandemic, school violence, you know, the kind with guns. I think about upending of democratic values. I think about more than anything, racial violence, police brutality, and unending white supremacy movements all around us. And I really look forward to my children and their peers having a safe place to rest and be soothed and feel safe. Next, I'd like to talk about the DEI initiative presentation that was made. That report was really thorough, but I just want to emphasize two points in that report that really spoke to me personally. One is that data on disproportionate suspensions. My older son, again, he's in fourth grade, he's nine, he's cute, he's a left-handed pitcher. He's really, really talented, really smart little guy. He just wrote a book about baseball. He's been suspended when he was four years old in preschool, not at a Collingswood Public School, so thank you for that. Maybe it wouldn't have happened if he had been in a public school. He was at a private preschool here in town. But he was asked not to come back to the classroom for a few days because of his behavior. The calm-down corner wasn't really cutting it, I guess. That school needed more to support him. But the effect of that experience upon me, upon him, upon our family, it's hard to overstate what that's meant to us. And you can bet he was the only black boy in his class. I mean, obviously. So it's my hope that as a result of exploring this data, making that data public about the disproportionate rate of suspensions, that this the disproportionate rate of suspensions, that this district will not only close that representation gap, ensuring that young black men are not removed from our classrooms and experiencing harsh punitive measures, but instead, I look forward to seeing restorative discipline grow and thrive in this district. And I heard the word "restorative" several times during this presentation, which I appreciate. Then the other point in the DEI report that I'd like to emphasize is I'm really excited...
Sorry, Ms. Morkowski.
Shoot.
The five minutes is up.
Diversity is a qualification, not just a bonus when you're hiring. That's it.
I am Alexandra Guido, 311 Lakeview Drive. I am also here to speak about the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, and I thank you all for your work, and especially Roger Chu for acknowledging my husband and the role that he is going to be playing in that. And I want to take just a minute to talk about why I believe that it is so important. This is a community that my husband and I, we are here, we are raising our beautiful brown-skinned girls, and we know that the task that you are undertaking, you've said, Dr. McDowell, it's not going to start immediately, but you are not pausing and waiting. You are starting the process now, and our hope is that by the time our neurodivergent four-year-old gets to the high school, that it will be a place where, before then, where she is welcomed and she is loved and she sees herself in the community, the school community around her. And the reason that I feel that is because we have to give my children the talk, so that they know they will never be entitled. They will never live the life of somebody who looks like me. They can't... My children have been on a bike ride through the streets of Collingswood where somebody came up to me and asked me if I was safe because my husband was driving, my husband was riding his bike behind me, and did I need some help because he had his hood up? And my girls, my girls, the work that you are doing now for my 12-year-old and my four-year-old and for all of the children of Collingswood, I implore you to continue on the road that you are going and have their faces in mind because we are 100% in. You have my husband, the nights when I'm putting the kids to bed, we have a sitter tonight, which is why I'm here. I'm usually in the back of Zoom calls waving, putting the kids to bed, but this is important, and I thank you for taking the lives of all of the children and especially the children in this community with brown skin to heart. This is why we're here. Thank you.
My name is Dolores Riley, 403 Cedar Avenue, Collingswood. I'm a 13-year resident of this community with 18 years' experience as a public school educator. First, I want to extend a warm and honest thank you to the faculty, staff, administration, and all our board members who have worked tirelessly through the difficult years of the pandemic and post-pandemic life. These past three years have provided challenges never before experienced in my time as an educator, and hearing from fellow parents here and their experiences and this need for diversity, equity, inclusion discussions just emphasizes all the more how much work we do have to do, but I also want to thank you all for being willing to put in the work and fight the fight because we do need to do that. As we consider the current issues we are facing, we must acknowledge what has and has not happened with a focus on verifiable facts, not speculation and hearsay. We need to avoid the trap of confirmation bias where we only turn to and or listen to sources that support what we already believe is true. So let's talk facts. What has current administration accomplished? First, I do want to acknowledge that these accomplishments have been supported by faculty and staff and would not be happening without the committed professionals throughout this district. Many things I'm going to say have already been highlighted tonight, so I'm going to kind of quickly go through them. We have our Trauma-Informed Grant, our new Wellness Center, the Hiring of the Consultant to address issues of diversity, equity, inclusion. We have the meetings that were with the students following the walkouts that occurred regarding the racial disparities and instances of racism in the schools. We also have new CTE funding, Career and Technical Education for an Engineering Program, currently in its first year, ultimately building to a four-year program. We also have support for CPAG, the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, most recently supporting the implementation of Noradiversity Week right this week in schools across the district. We have professional development time for teachers on Wednesday afternoons. We offer diversified and relevant texts to students for their summer reading assignments. And of course, our students have accomplished so many great things, whether in academics, sports, arts, and more, with the support of faculty, staff, and administration. Unfortunately, we have suffered loss of a Latin program due to low enrollment, followed by a teacher resignation, and we are dealing with all of those issues that have already been brought up this evening. However, we need to give administration and the board, and I'm feeling pretty confident that this is happening, we need to give them time to respond as change does not happen overnight. It takes time and the support of all involved parties to make real positive change. For instance, this Wellness Center is designed to support students' social, emotional needs, and that's going to have an impact on student behaviors throughout the school. Removing any specific individual from district administration will not solve our problems. This focus on who to blame is taking attention away from actually solving the issues we are facing. These issues are complex and are the result of many factors. We cannot blame one person. I do believe it's important to remind everyone, our board members and superintendent live in our community, have children in our schools. They are our neighbors and the parents of our children's classmates. These individuals care deeply about the success of our schools and the success of all of our children. These individuals are often faced with difficult decisions and are forced to deal with challenging issues for which we cannot know the details due to the requirements for confidentiality and the ethical obligations of the board. Holding a seat on the Board of Education is not an easy task, and our board members are often faced with harsh criticism and blame for whatever problems our school face. Regarding our board president, I've known Reagan Kaden for a number of years and worked directly with her in a number of community and school programs. She has earned my trust and my respect and therefore my full support. I am confident that she thoughtfully considers the needs of all of our students when she is acting as board president. Quite honestly, I'm amazed by her ability to persevere in this role despite the harsh criticism and lack of support from the community. I ask us all to focus on solutions. We're going to find specific ways to improve our school culture, and I'm confident that many of those solutions have been laid out for us tonight, and thank you, Dr. McDowell, for all of those details. Our community as a whole must be the focus of our efforts. We need to acknowledge that it's not just one student who represents the needs of our students, it is all of our students, and we need to look at the entire community. We need to look at our brown students, our students of color, our, you know, LBGBC students. We need to look at all of them and what their needs are. We need to accept that our challenges are great and difficult decisions sometimes need to be made when it comes to funding and support for programs and initiatives. Positive change can only happen if we work together to support our schools. The true needs of our community can only be met when we seek out and listen to all voices, not just the loudest ones. Thank you.
Wayne Rossi, 114 East Palmer Ave. So, yeah, I appreciated Dr. McDowell's presentation on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I do have to note that I think that equity has to begin in the elementary level, and while I'll note that if Zane and Garfield are in the top 100, that means that Newby, Tatum, and Sharp are not, and that's something that we have to take seriously as...
Not yet.
...as an issue. Yes, but I did want to start with a note on that. So the first thing I wanted to note, I appreciate a lot of the content. I do think that with declaring that this is going to be a very top-down approach, I think that increases the need for transparency and communication, both to parents and to students. I think it's very important if it's starting from the leadership, that things, these things are passed down and that these are very visible and not sort of like just, oh, well, stuff is happening up there. I think that's a very important point. I heard a lot of talk, which I really appreciate, about restorative justice. I think it's an important framework to take into account. I do, you know, on the other hand, I heard talking about, you know, working with the town police, which, you know, is sort of, this is a tension that goes on in a lot of schools that try to bring in restorative justice because theoretically, restorative justice principles are supposed to be alternatives to punitive and carceral means rather than to like sort of be a feel-good supplement for when you can and then, you know, throw it to that. So I think it's important that the spirit of it be done right, and I think that there can be some tension between those two approaches to discipline in a school. Dr. McDowell did give me information on curriculum, and I appreciate that. I do think that curriculum should be more of a part of this early, simply because it's going to take a long time to get, I think, more into, and I think that there does need to be a stronger component of both history and of like anti-racist ideas in development in the curriculum, racial justice, because this is really critical if the culture of the school is going to change. And I think that that felt like a gap in the plan that was presented tonight. And the last point I wanted to bring up, it was something I had heard in a different meeting and something I think would be useful as part of training because I heard things in the town hall, you know, back last month, about how students of color are perceived initially. And I think if we look into the concept of asset framing and viewing the person as a person with their own goals and ideals first rather than how we choose to perceive them, I really think that that concept of how students of color are approached, which I think goes into that, you know, humongous disparity in suspensions, I think that that kind of thing could be a real positive as far as growing all of this. Overall, I do really appreciate this. I'm not bringing these notes to just be critical. I really want this to succeed, and I really hope that everyone in this board is a part of making this a big success. Thank you very much.
My name is Latoya Goodall. I am one of the high school counselors here at CHS. I appreciate all of the information that was presented, particularly on DEI and building cultural competence and unity within our communities so that we feel as one. For those of you that do not know me, I, again, am one of the school counselors. I love and adore our youth. I am always about building up our youth, empowering them to speak out against wrongdoing. As a black woman, I have experienced from a very young age people trying to silence me, and I still experience it to this day. So I am always advocating for our students to use their voice. And while I wasn't in the room last week, I was so disheartened to hear what Aiden and Riley experienced. And again, I can't speak on too much because I was not in the room, but in the spirit, well, first, I know them both very well. Aiden has been one of my students since his freshman year. I've seen him grow and shift the school in his leadership. I've worked with Riley through the musical. She is a beautiful spirit. She is always advocating and building up her peers. So the two students who spoke today were in the positions that they are in for a reason. It was meant for them to be in those positions, and to hear that they were put in a position to resign, really, it just breaks my heart, for lack of a better word, for lack of better words. So I just want to encourage, if anything, in the spirit of student voice, in the spirit of family and love and community, and in the spirit of restorative justice, which we speak so much about in these meetings, that there be some restorative justice with our students. There needs to be some, Dr. McDowell brought up, healing. There needs to be some healing, and there needs to be some restoration that needs to be done with our youth and with the board, and in turn with staff and with everyone here in this building. So I just encourage you all to do so, those that were in the meeting with Aiden and Riley. And Aiden and Riley, I just applaud you for your bravery. It's not easy to get up and speak the way that you did as an adult, let alone as a 17-year-old, so I applaud you, I honor you, and I wish you the best.
My name is Matt Friedman. I'm also a school counselor at the high school. This is my eighth year at Collingswood, and it's actually my third board meeting I've ever attended, kind of embarrassed to say that. But actually, at a staff meeting a few months ago, I spoke up to address something, you know, wanting positive change for an issue that was going on, and the staff member said, "Man, if Matt is talking, there has to be an issue going on." So they were kind of right. I'm talking about personnel on the agenda. I'm asking you guys for help. Collingswood High School has been an amazing destination for decades, including the eight years I've been here. I have witnessed several adults refer to their workplace as their home, their colleagues as family. Naturally, staff members will retire at the end of a career of devoting 30 or 40 years to their schools. Sometimes people change careers, shift their focus. Unfortunately, we are currently having amazing teachers and staff members leave Collingswood to go to other schools. In several cases, you can walk to the new destinations from here. Rather than continue to say, "People will leave, that's just the nature of education," we should ask, "Why?" Why are these incredible individuals choosing to leave a place where they love their students, a place they have referred to as their home and a place they wish to remain until retirement? We know the easy answer: more money. They're going to go where there is more money, but that answer honestly would just be a cop-out. We know there are limitations to salaries and contracts. It's not the lucrative cash opportunities that have kept our staff at Collingswood rather than head elsewhere. These other local opportunities for higher salaries have existed for years, so why now? Speaking generally, you usually stay in a job because either they pay you more money than other places, or you're valued and treated with more respect than you might in another location. I can't speak for every teacher, but I know some are feeling disconnected from the old Collingswood. They're missing the connection and communication across all levels of our district. Some are scared their programs or classes will be eliminated, and they get no reassurance or clarity. I can't speak on every reason someone may leave, but as it continues to happen, you could investigate and ask, "How can I change that?" You may not be able to see it, but losing our strong staff members could put our school at risk to lose what makes it so special for our children. The crucial part of this now is how our district responds. Yes, people leave. Time to hire new people, of course. This could be a defining moment, though, for our district. It is too easy just to post positions as they pop up. It might not yield the results our district needs. If you want to bring dynamic and game-changing people to replace what we are losing, you may need to go and find them, more than just post the position and pray. Have you ever been to a job fair where there are board members and superintendents recruiting new people looking to make an impact? That is powerful. Or having those same officials connect with organizations like the Center for Black Educator Development or Project Impact at Rowan University as a way to provide an opportunity for diversity and more representation in our schools. There are opportunities waiting, but there is not a lot of time. These other districts have already hired teachers for next year. We need to move, but we need you guys. Please be there for our staff and teachers. Many of them are struggling right now, and we cannot afford to lose more. For the positions that are open, a new approach could possibly result in new opportunity and progress in our town. Thank you.
Sue Guerstein, 439 McGill Avenue. I'm an almost 40-year educator, and for about the last 20 years have been working in education services, helping schools and districts in grave need of turnaround support, DEI work, equity work, cultural proficiency, anti-racism work, special education, the list goes on. And I'm a proud part of this community and have always been a staunch advocate of our public school system. And now that I've got two students here at the high school, first of all, I want to say that guy there is one of your finest. He's been a lifeline for our son, Parker. You've heard us speak about him and his circumstances in prior board meetings. You know, I do want to say thank you for the DEI presentation, and I would also say it's about damn time. When your mentor told you, "Go slow to go fast," you really took that to heart. When your mentor told you, go slow to go fast, you really took that to heart. But this is good work. This is progress. And I'm grateful to hear that after there was rioting in the streets, literally out in front of our school, we are going to do something about it. So thank you for that. I'd also note that the initial Equity Committee was established in 2018 and sort of sputtered in 2020. And we've gone through COVID and we all know that this has placed an incredible burden on all of you, all of us, all of our children, our staff. We're recovering, I get that. But I popped open Facebook a few minutes ago and noticed that we are now about to lose Sarah Domeniac, Haddonfield. My daughter's AP Chem teacher. One of your best and brightest going down the road. This is gut-wrenching. And another gut-wrenching, you know, aspect of this, our freshmen will be starting at Moorestown High School in the fourth quarter. We can't wait. We can't wait. So I really hope that we turn things around and I hope that we can sustain this. And I hope that we will turn our attention to caring both for the adults in this school community and the students we serve. Because if we can't care for both of those stakeholders, there will be no one here to care for our students. So I get it. Maybe the prior leadership had a history of placating the grownups in this district, but how long will we punish them for that? It's time to care for them because they're here to care for our children. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate Allendorfer, 629 Beddylwood Avenue. I'm a proud mom of a CHS alum and a CHS junior. And I'm here to express my appreciation to the board and the superintendent for your engagement with difficult issues on behalf of our community. I am heartened at the work that the district is doing in pursuit of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I want to recognize the sensitive nature of the work that all of you do and how that can sometimes limit what you all are able to say publicly. As a parent, I'm very happy to know that you all respect the privacy of our children. And that can sometimes mean that you can't always share full details of what's happening. That's why I particularly appreciated the data Dr. McDowell offered around the rate of altercations in the high school. That perspective is extremely important, especially when emotions are running high. A strong fact base is critical to making appropriate proportional and effective action. And I hope you'll look for more opportunities to put what's happening in our schools in that kind of context, because it's really easy to lose sight of that. That's it, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tim Farrow. I live at 911 Park Avenue. So I want to talk a little bit about walking the walk. Because I saw a presentation tonight where I saw some outstanding talking the talk from Dr. McDowell, with no disrespect intended. It was a great presentation. It was a great presentation of some improvements that we've heard about that are being made. And these improvements, if actually implemented, I certainly believe will greatly improve the situation that we're now dealing with. But I want to talk a little bit about walking the walk. And what I mean by that is if we go back first to what we heard from our student, former student representatives, and we think back to what we heard from both of them at that January meeting, and what we heard were many anonymous comments that were made to them by different members of staff. And we also heard from those students things that they experienced directly from our superintendent. And what I heard a lot of after that was, well, how do we know these things are true? Do we know these things are really happening? Do we know that it's more than just a couple faculty and staff members? Do we have any real surveys with real data? Because I know there's a lot of data that has been produced over the last few months. But what I do not see in any of the data is any data to back up or not to back up what was said by these student representatives. A simple survey, we're familiar with Survey Monkey, could be done in about five, 10 minutes. A couple questions to our staff members. Do you have the support of our leadership in this town? Do you feel like you have support from our leadership in this town? Are you satisfied with the direction that the leadership on our administration, on our board is going? Simple survey that could have been sent out. Then we don't have innuendos allegedly that are being made. We have facts and data. And I know why that hasn't been done. Because people like me that are active in this community have heard it directly. Every single thing that's said was said by Mr. DiMarco. I've heard those things and other members of this community have heard those things directly. That would have been the answers we would have received in a survey that were sent out. But it wasn't done. Instead, what we have had done recently is to stifle any dissension that is made when it comes to challenging what's been going on by our administration. That's not what leadership's about. That's not what leadership from the board is about. And it's not what leadership of our district is about when it comes to having the support of our faculty and staff. So what I'm asking for now is to consider in the next year, I know that we have a contract that our superintendent is under that is up June 30th. I know that under the state statute, that contract, if it's not going to be renewed, notice has to be provided at least 90 days prior to that, which would be a year from today's date essentially. So what I'm asking is that I know this board would not wait until the moment before that 90th day is up, when notice has to be provided if that contract is not going to be renewed. I know that decision's not going to be made lightly. I know it's not going to be made on the eve of that 90th day. And what I do know is that despite the data that has been presented about comparisons of violence at this high school this year and other years, is that this high school is on fire. And I don't say that to be dramatic, but I say it because that's what I'm hearing from members of our community almost daily for the last three months. The fire has to be put out. We can't have long-term plans if we don't put the fire out. And the fire has to be put out, starting from the top with our leadership. I do not intend to personally attack anybody, including our leaders, Dr. McDowell, Ms. Caden. But what I do say is, the community needs leaders. And respectfully, we do not have them right now. And action needs to be taken with the urgency of what is being felt in this community. Thank you.
Moving on to Section 8, the superintendent's report. Dr. McDowell.
So good evening again. Section 8.01 is the district enrollment report. February of 2022, district enrollment was 2252. Effective February 2023, enrollment is 2283 with the current and the five-year enrollment report attached. 8.02, .03, and .04 is the attached Safety Drill, Suspension, and Anti-Bullying Report. And 8.05, I just wanted to bring some attention to a couple of really important and really exciting things that are happening within our school community. First, this is Neurodiversity Week. So the entire week, it's a district-wide initiative that we have fully embraced to acknowledge the differences such as autism, ADHD, dyslexia, and present content to students in a very strength-based and inclusive way. We'd like to publicly thank the continued work and leadership coming from our CPAC as they continue to partner with the district and we seek ways to accelerate our progress to become a more inclusive school community. We'd also like to give special thanks to the Once Upon a Mattress, the entire production team. So on behalf of Collingswood High School and the theater team, we want to thank everyone who attended the Spring Musical. We are happy to report that it was another rousing success. Over 70 high school students participated in the show, whether they were in the cast, helped behind the scenes. We appreciate everyone's collective effort in the production. We would also like to publicly acknowledge the Collingswood teachers and staff who assisted in the production. Ms. Whitman, Mr. Gross, Mrs. Goodall, Mrs. Intricasso, Mr. Hartung, and Mr. Jackson. With a special thank you to Mr. Keith Higginbotham and the facilities team for ensuring that the lighting equipment was upgraded in time for the show. And then as always, we'd also like to thank the Board of Education for their continued support and investment in the arts for our school community. We'd also like to announce that the senior editor for PAWS TV has won an award. So please join me as we congratulate Yessenia Aguilar Medina as the winner of the Garden State Film Documentary Short winner. Her piece entitled "La Reyes del Corazon Aguilar" is a documentary short about keeping Mexican culture alive in South Jersey through the customs of clothing and food. Felicidades, Yessenia. Special thanks to Mrs. Arminow for supporting the next generation of filmmakers. And finally, and this is something that's near and dear to my heart based on similar struggles in my immediate family. I just wanted to publicly recognize and thank all of those who, over the last several weeks, have really come out in force to help to support one of our facilities team members who were struggling with a very serious medical diagnosis. We'd like to specially acknowledge the dine and donate events at Norma's Mediterranean Cuisine and the White Horse Pub. And specifically, we would like to bring attention to all of our elementary PTAs who participated in Pajama Day on Friday. They raised $2,200 in one day and delivered it to the family this past Saturday. Can we give them a round of applause, please? And so as the child of a parent who received a similar diagnosis as our team member, I just wanted to personally say thank you to all of our school community that really continues to show up for one of our own. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Section 10 is our Business Administrator Board Secretary report. Ms. Coleman.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
That was my mistake. Sorry, Bethany, give me a second.
Okay, don't worry about it.
Section 9 is our student reports and we are formally accepting the resignation of our student board reps. And now we are moving on to Section 10, the Business Administrator Board Secretary report.
This evening, item 10.01 is a listing of your February monthly budget transfers. 10.02 is your financial statements for the month of February. 10.03 is your student activities cash report. 10.04 is your February food service financial statements. 10.05 is a listing of the purchase orders that have been issued for you. And in 10 point, I lost count, I'm sorry. 10.06 is a listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning pending approval.
Thank you. Moving on to Section 11, the Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee. Ms... No, no, it's in the finance. Mr. Craig will present.
Thank you. The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. For 11, we're seeking approval on the filing items. 1102 to 1109 is the Board Secretary report that Ms. Coleman just presented. 1110 is approving an application for Newbie to apply for a grant program that will fund climate change education and projects on their campus. 1111 is approving year two of a three-year grant that we received last year that we've been using to build out the engineering program at the high school. 1112 is approval of Title I SIA funds for Sharp, the amount of $10,000. 1113 is approval of a tuition student to finish 10th grade in district. 1114 is Title I staff designations and cleaning up of some of the Title I grant. 1115 is request for proposals for services for the district. An annual list that goes out. 1116 is the shared service agreement with Haddon Township, which is one of our many agreements with our neighboring districts. 1117 is an agreement with a new organization to provide copiers, one to the board office, one to the high school, and one to the middle school. This, the company that we are switching to, provides service to our area where the former company no longer does. So hopefully this will lead to less issues with the copiers or if they do come up, a quicker response to fixing them and then some opportunities to save money in both toner and that they're buying our old copiers. And then 1118, 1119, use of facility requests for sound of music for a spring concert and Collingswood Youth Theater for rehearsals and a summer performance. So seeking approval for items 1102 to 1119. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
I just had a quick question about 1113. Is it listed under Finance, Buildings, and Grounds because it has to do with tuition and not this programming for the student?
Yes.
Yes, that's why it's in Finance.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry? Mrs. McColsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Everino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia? Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Docus? Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Next, we have Section 12, the Curriculum Committee. Mr. Chu?
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. So up for approval tonight, 12.02, elementary school field trips, 12.03, middle school field trips, 12.04, high school field trips. So just briefly, for the elementary school, we have several trips, I think, to the All Fired Up. We have a trip to the Collingswood Police Fire Department, Night Park, and also Philadelphia Zoo and I think Storybook Land. And I think to piggyback on what Dr. McDowell said earlier, you know, thinking the PTA, my understanding is that the PTAs help offset the cost of transportation for a lot of these trips. So thank you to the PTAs for that. At the middle school level, we have, I think, the, is it the choir? Is going to be performing the National Anthem at Citizens Bank Park on Saturday, June 24th. So that's pretty cool. And then for the high school, there are a number of trips there. Also, I do want to point out several field trips for the unified programming, which is, I think it's grant-funded, correct? But it's specifically for students in our special education program to compete in athletics against and with students from other districts. So I think it's a really cool program. Wanted to shout that out. So then, items 12.05 is an approval for a senior chaperone. And then 12.06 is an out-of-district placement, as is 12.07. 12.08 is a home instruction, out-of-district and home instruction placements, as is 12.09 and 12.10. 12.11 is the 2023-2024 district school calendar. I think it's worth noting that there will be a supplemental calendar coming out. I think it's worth noting that there will be a supplemental calendar coming out in June, which should, I think, include additional dates about the PLCs, basically, and when those will fall on the calendar. So, be on the lookout for that. The idea is have that additional supplement out prior to when families leave for summer break. And then, twelve point twelve is the approval of some high school after-school clubs. And so, we are seeking approval of twelve point oh two through twelve point twelve.
Is there a motion?
Sub move.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments for board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. McColsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Excuse me, yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where abstain and twelve point eleven where I vote no.
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Next is section thirteen, the Personnel Committee. Ms. Sheridan, Celia?
The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Seeking approval for the following items this evening. At item thirteen point zero two, Neil King, who is a high school art teacher and has been with the district for thirty years, is retiring, and we wish him well. Items thirteen point oh three to thirteen point oh four are two resignations. Thirteen oh five, an unpaid leave of absence. Thirteen point oh six is an unpaid FMLA leave. Thirteen point oh seven is the appointment of, actually, thirteen point oh seven and thirteen point eight are the appointment of two high school long-term subs and replacement teachers. Thirteen point zero nine is an elementary permanent building sub. Thirteen point ten is the appointment of athletic building, sorry, athletic event personnel. Thirteen point eleven, middle school athletic extra-duty pay stipends approval. Thirteen point twelve, approval of teachers for Saturday school detention. Thirteen point thirteen is the approval of student observations within the classrooms for two students, I'm sorry, three students. Thirteen point fourteen, appointment of two substitutes and tutors. And thirteen point fifteen, travel expense form. I think there's three items on that this meeting. So, I'm seeking approval of items thirteen point zero two through thirteen point fifteen this evening.
Motion?
Sub move.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. McColsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where abstain.
Mr. Docus?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Section fourteen, the Culture, Climate, and Policy Committee. Ms. Severino?
The Culture, Climate, and Policy Committee reviews all updates and changes of district policy and regulations. Before I get into the items listed on the agenda, we are in receipt of a petition regarding policy fifty-one twelve, which is the entrance age policy. We, as a committee, have not had the opportunity to discuss the specific request forwarded to us with regards to this policy. And so, we would like the opportunity to do so in our April committee meetings. So, we will have an update during our board meeting in April on that specific policy. With regards to the policies listed on the agenda, we have policy one fifty-two, which is board officers' policy. That lays out the protocol for the elections of the president and vice president of the board. One sixty-one, which is the call adjournment and cancellation policy. And then, number one sixty-two, the notice of board meetings. And number two four two five, emergency virtual or remote instruction. That just allows for virtual remote instruction in the case of state, in a state of emergency, whether it's health or otherwise. And number five three three oh point oh four, the administering of an opioid anecdote. So, I am looking for, is that just one number? Yeah, okay. I am looking for a...
I talk about oh three, the abolished policies.
Ah, yes, sorry, sorry. Wait, say that again?
I have fourteen oh three, got two policies we're abolishing.
We are abolishing policies fourteen, sorry, sixteen forty-eight point eleven, the Road Forward, COVID-nineteen, health and safety, and sixteen forty-eight point thirteen, school employee vaccination requirements. Now, we're good. So, I am seeking approval of fourteen oh two and three.
Is there a motion to approve?
Sub moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. McColsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Docus?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Section fifteen, miscellaneous, it just has one item. Fifteen point oh one is the recommendation to approve the anti-bullying report presented during the February twenty twenty-three meeting. This report includes both potential and confirmed instances of bullying and includes the outcome of each investigation. Is it a motion or an all-in?
Yeah, I apologize. You should, yeah, you need a motion and a second, then I'll do a roll.
Motion to approve fifteen point oh one.
Sub moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. McColsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Sorry.
Those off for just a minute there.
That's okay, I'm with you. Mr. Docus?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Moving on to section sixteen, which is our second opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this section is for more general public participation. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all complaints, concerns, and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. As I said earlier, the intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We'll be listening and taking notes. Members of the board are welcome to speak and expected to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict five-minute time limit per person during public comment. Please come to the microphone, stand, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, most of you know me, but my name is Cara Boyler. I live at nine East Summerfield Avenue in Collingswood. I have four daughters attending Collingswood Public Schools. They range from pre-K all the way to high school. I have been involved in our schools at the elementary level for almost nine years, between running after-school clubs, caring for the school grounds, and participating as a board member on the elementary and middle school PTAs. My goal, as I'm sure everybody on the boards has been, is to help create a positive space for my children and their peers to benefit our larger community. As my older children have grown into the secondary schools, I would like to try to continue to support the schools the best I can. However, I've been disheartened watching things become unbearable for both students and staff since our return after remote learning. I've attempted to become more involved at the secondary level to try to carve away into helping be supportive as I can be at the elementary, as I have been at the elementary level. I've been to meetings regarding the high school principal search, Board of Education meetings, and to advisory committee meetings. In all of this, I've heard a lot about Vision 2026. But as involved as I have been, I don't really have a clear idea of how the vision is to benefit our students, our staff, our schools, when we appear to be in a crisis right now. So, I ask of the board, as we continue with Vision 2026, that maybe there's some more open communication about what the goals actually are. We've had a lot of taglines, but I don't understand what the taglines mean. And I've been involved in a lot of meetings. Since my oldest daughter was able to return to the classroom setting in ninth grade, my strong feeling is that we have very important work to do right now to ensure student wellness and success. The wellness room was a great step, and I thank everybody here for working towards that. But we shouldn't pretend that is the magic answer to the discord within the walls of this high school. My observation through talking to staff within the district is that the return to school has not been smooth, and this is not unique to our district. All of our students and our staff need broad support now before we can continue even thinking about goals for 2026. I implore the board to put the focus into fixing the problems facing our students and staff right now. I am concerned that our staff feels like they're on the chopping block, or they are generally unsupported. This is a sentiment that I have heard while being involved at the schools across all of the grade levels. If staff does not have the support of the board or their district administrators, then how can they maintain the determination to help our students now, much less see the district through, to a vision for 2026? To me, it has felt a little tone-deaf to put money towards a future vision for our schools when we really need to be in the mindset of a recovery after a pandemic. I hope that we continue to support the staff with any tools necessary to make sure that they are able to work with us to maintain a positive and effective learning environment for our children and their peers. We have been seeking out other school options for our rising eighth grader because we are concerned about the potential loss of staff and the potential loss of opportunities within the district. We are seeing staff leaving and hearing about more intending to leave because they are not supported and because programs within the district are not being seen as valuable due to low student enrollment. I would argue that these things are the very things that make our district unique. They are the reason why families stay in the district. If we are not supporting our staff and our unique enrichment opportunities, then we are eliminating opportunities for our district and opportunities for sending districts who want to attend Collingswood because of our enrichment opportunities. If we are only trying to raise test scores, then the creative, vibrant community of Collingswood is no longer echoed within our school walls. My middle schooler is already aware of friends leaving the district for the next school year and lacks enthusiasm to move forward into high school. So, on that note, I hope that we can put a stop to the current fraying within our schools so that we can maintain all of the positive attributes that our schools have and so that achieving a future vision doesn't become an insurmountable task. Thank you.
Good evening, Lisa Steinhauer, ten thirty-three Park Avenue. I want to thank you for the recognition of the petition that was submitted. The petition was submitted to the board yesterday, which was, and the petition is to change policy five one one two on entrance age policy, which was updated at the January school board meeting. The petition contained ninety-eight signatures from community members in support of three amendments to the current policy. This policy prioritized age as the only criteria for grade-level placement in the Collingswood School District. As currently written, the entrance age policy removes parent and family choice to make the best decision for their family. But more than that, it's taking an emotional toll on many families who are trying to ensure the best possible outcomes for their children. Through the policy updates, parents have the option to submit concerns about grade-level readiness through an entrance age exception request process, but the school district holds the final decision for placement. And this process also places a burden on the family to gather documentation from multiple sources and draft a formal letter just for the opportunity for the school to consider allowing the parents to delay school entry for their child. My child is age-eligible for kindergarten next year and has been a part of the Collingswood preschool program for the past two years. Being an end-of-September birthday, he spent the first month of his three-year-old, of the three-year-old preschool program as a two-year-old. But we were told that he had to go if he wanted to be a part of the preschool program both years. Throughout the preschool program, we've seen him grow and progress, but we've also seen that he needs time to develop without being asked to perform ahead of his age. The Collingswood preschool program uses the creative curriculum, which bases skills and developmental milestones on age ranges. That means my child is being evaluated on skills that students should be meeting by the time they are five years old or sixty months. But he will only be fifty-six months by the end of the school year and will still not reach sixty months by the time he is expected to start kindergarten. With the entrance age policy as written, if we choose to enroll our child in a pre-kindergarten program outside the district next year, he will be placed in first grade when he returns without any other considerations. And there are many parents in this district who are already experiencing this situation after making big decisions to give their kids time to reach an appropriate developmental place to begin kindergarten. Right now, the only option available in the district is for kids to go to kindergarten, coordinate additional supports for the student, and then have the child repeat kindergarten. The policy is forcing families to make hard decisions that they know is not in the best interest for their child, and is also forcing the district to be reactive rather than proactive with valuable resources. If a parent knows that their child will benefit and thrive if kindergarten is delayed, then why is the board making it so difficult for the parents to make that decision? I asked at last month's meeting and through email if other school district policies were consulted and which ones they were. There's still been no response. There are no other surrounding districts with an entrance age policy that restricts, that is restricted to age like Collingswood. But beyond that, it would be helpful to just understand why the board decided on this entrance age policy. Back to the petition, we are urging the Collingswood Board of Education to change policy five one one two entrance age with the following amendments. One, add an exception for children with birthdays July first to October first to allow parent choice without justification to grade-level placement into kindergarten or first grade. Two, add an exception for students starting their schooling, including preschool, in another state, school district, or private school to continue to the next available grade level without disruption or missing or skipping a grade level. And number three, remove all language discouraging education outside of Collingswood School District. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Katie Keener, and I live at ten twenty-five Park Ave. I'm also here in support of the petition to change policy five one one two for the entrance age. I'm a speech pathologist, and I've worked in the Burlington County School District for ten years before I became a mom and a full-time caregiver. The kindergarten classes were my favorite to work with, especially in the beginning of the year when they came in and they were brand-new to the school. A lot of times, it was easy to identify which kids did and did not go to preschool, but during the school year, it kind of all leveled out, and all of the kids kind of, skill-wise, caught up with each other. However, I observed that the group that had the hardest time was the youngest of these kids. It wasn't always due to academic ability, but sometimes immaturity purely because they were just way younger. Watching these students advance through the next several grades, I witnessed them experience difficulties with social skills, resulting in withdrawal from classmates or becoming the class clown. These struggles can also greatly negatively impact a student's self-esteem or create unnecessary anxiety. My son Logan turns five in July, and he was born six weeks early. Therefore, he had some sensory issues, and when starting the preschool program last year, he had difficulties with transitions and following directions. Last October, he had to meet his brother via FaceTime as he sustained a brain injury at birth. He has since been diagnosed with HIe epilepsy and CP. Supporting and caring for him will be a lifelong challenge for our whole family, especially Logan, who takes his big brother role very seriously. I don't know who Logan will be in a couple years, but I know who he is now. We are not sure if he is ready for kindergarten. He has a lot on his plate as it is, and I don't know if he will struggle as a result of being the youngest in his class, but that is a decision that my husband and I should be able to make for our son. As a speech pathologist, I treat the whole person. Logan may appear to be ready for kindergarten on paper, but he is so much more than that. We should be able to make this decision that could possibly alter the path of his student career, or whether he loves or dreads going to school. Just as we are raising our boys to not be defined by labels, Logan should not be defined by his age to determine whether or not he is ready for kindergarten. Thank you.
Hi, Daniella Salon Award, twenty-one West Franklin Ave. I'm with them. So, we're glad you have the policy. We hope you have a chance to continue the space with us to discuss these amendments, and maybe next time, we'll get to go on the first part of Act One comments in April. But for now, what I want to bring to public comment is, what do we do in the meantime? Parents deserve some transparency. Last year, there were hushed rumors in the Facebook group about an exam. And if you're relentless, if you called a lot, if you left a lot of messages, lots of emails, maybe, maybe, your four- or five-year-old could sit for an exam to prove why they were either not ready for kindergarten or desperately needed kindergarten. either not ready for kindergarten or desperately needed kindergarten to begin their school journey. For reference, policy as it stands, would have my daughter, who has never attended kindergarten, go directly into first grade? So yes, we have a Google form now. We can upload documents. Which documents? Dealer's choice. A doctor's letter? Will that be enough? What about a therapist? A pre-K teacher? Surely a pre-K teacher knows about their student, but we don't know. Is that going to carry enough weight? Hopefully. And then we wait. Will our child get to take the exam? When is the exam? When will we know what happens? How long is the exam? What if our kid passes the exam, but our issues weren't academic, they were psychosocial? Speaking with fellow parents over the last couple of weeks gathering these signatures, I've encountered parents who pushed their child in the kindergarten because they were so daunted and intimidated by what I'm going through right now. And now they're halfway through kindergarten and they're watching their child struggle and they're wondering, did they make the right decision? Should they have fought it? Now what? No parent wants to see their child struggle. So I'll close by saying that in addition to an overwhelming amount of support from other parents and community members, we heard from educators, current and former, and their message to us was to keep fighting, that we know our child best and if we think that they would benefit from an additional year of development, we're probably right and to trust our gut, which we do. Thank you.
So many things to say. Heather Hackel, 439 McGill Avenue. I want to address those parents that just came up here. I'm an elementary PK to three principal. I wouldn't argue with these people. I see those young kids every day that are pushed into schools. You know what's going to happen? They're going to act up because they're immature. You're going to want to classify them. You're going to want to I-team them because they're not ready. Let them make the decision and guess what? There's past precedent here because my wife and I challenged Dr. Oswald on this. When Parker was screened, he's a September 8th birthday. He came out of early intervention. He wasn't ready. He was screened. The screener said he wasn't ready. Dr. Oswald granted us another year in preschool. So now he's an old freshman. Could I imagine my son being a sophomore right now? No, he's barely 5'6". He's one of the youngest persons in his class. They deserve, you don't ever get that chance to get the gift of time. That's what they want for their kids. The gift of time is so important because when they're coming to the high school, the principal was sitting there, when they're coming to the high school, you can pick out the young freshman boys. They're bouncing off the walls and they speak from experience because they've been there. So thank you for speaking up. I think you should be able to do that. I have no words for what happened to these two scholars right here. Riley is going to Barnard University. It's part of Columbia. She's no dummy. What happened to them is wrong. The intimidation from adults was wrong. Nobody should put those kids in that position. Nobody had put Mr. Whalen in that position. He had no idea what was going on. He called Kelly and apologized profusely in tears because he was so mortified of having to walk those children, children, they're 17, to that meeting to hear those words from you. Shameful, awful. Listen, you can put into place different policies, you can train people in restorative justice, you can partner with the borough and all the people in all the land, but if you don't get your admin team unified and your teachers unified to all work together towards the same philosophy, you will not change the culture. You will not change this culture. Tim Farrell was right. The high school is on fire. It's in a dumpster and it's on fire. Parker's gone. We're done. A week from today, he's going to Moorestown. Sedona graduating, thankfully. So I'm kind of done, but I'm not done for my community. I'm way too passionate about education. It's why I'm in the business. I think you need to rethink your numbers for your physical altercations. I think there was three this week. Unless we're counting them, that they're all so close together, we're counting them as one. Kids were in shelter in place for almost an hour? Why? To clear the halls for a fight? It took that long to clear the halls? An hour they were locked in shelter in place, which is not a lockdown. I get it. It's business as usual, but when your child is in the library using the bathroom because they have a class in the orchestra room because they can't use the bathroom in the middle school, so they have to go to the library in the high school to use the bathroom, they're in shelter in place in the library. They're not in the orchestra room for almost an hour? So I think you need to rethink your numbers because the fights are happening. Your people, including you, need to get your boots on the ground. You need to build relationships with these kids and these parents. It all starts with relationships. Your administration should have their finger on the pulse at all times. They should know a fight is brewing before it happens. I always did when I was administrator in the high school levels, middle school levels. I had kids whispering to me, "Hackel, it's going down. It's going down the cafeteria, period 4B." Then I put myself in that position. Of course, things happen in unstructured environments. Of course, they do. During passing time, during lunches, that's a no-brainer. That's not rocket science. Your work on diversity inclusion is needed and warranted, but what have you been doing for two years that you've been here? More people have said a lot fancier things than me tonight, but I'm really passionate. Had to stand up, say those things, and I have to back these ladies that know their kids better than anyone here. I'm usually having the kids that want to go to kindergarten when their birthday is October 3rd and I can't, I can't let them. I can give them a test and I can see how they're performing, but they're just going to keep being young for that grade. They deserve the opportunity to give their kids the gift of time. Thank you.
It's kind of weird being on this side. Clinton Connor, 609 Woodlawn Avenue. So first, I wanted to open by saying thank you for the work on the diversity and inclusion policies and the data. As somebody who sat there for six years, many of us have been asking for a lot of that information for, well, since I started on the board. So while I would have liked to have seen it six years ago, I am applauding the leadership to actually get it done at this point, especially a lot of the data, which in public meeting we were told we couldn't do a while back. So I actually really appreciate us getting to that point. So thank you to everybody. I do want to ask a couple of questions about the data or at least maybe some suggestions. I think adding economically disadvantaged is a valuable data point as well as children with disabilities or on any IEPs or anything in that range. LGBTQ issues, I think those are also important data points. I know that one's a little bit more challenging because it's not necessarily a state data collection point, but we want to make sure that all of our groups are not being treated unfairly. So I think it's important to add in those other areas. I also, I was going to speak to this earlier because this was actually mentioned, but now listening to everybody else, I kind of want to, if the, this fire in the high school, my kids aren't in the fire or in the high school. But something that has just been so discouraging to hear, both online and here, is the amount of people expressing that they're hearing from faculty and staff. So I want to implore the board, leadership, and also the community that instead of talking about gossip and rumors and speaking in inappropriate places, that if we want to put out that fire, we shouldn't be voicing our opinions to students in the middle school science class, which is an experience my son has recently had. It shouldn't be done at the back room of the Oakland Manor. If people have concerns, they should be using the appropriate places to have them because all of this other stuff is just adding fuel to the fire. It is not making any attempt to put it out. So I'm just asking for everybody to do the basics of civility, treating people with respect, trying to find out direct information before making assumptions. I agree, we should have a survey. There is a school climate survey available on the school board, the New Jersey State School Board Association website. It's for students and staff. I think it's a fantastic tool. It's something that's been talked about for a very long time, another thing that's been talked about for a very long time, because it is important to get direct information from folks and it is important to open direct communication with people that are having challenges and issues so that we don't have these gossip and rumors and these other things that are going on. I shouldn't hear from my son that it's Dr. McDowell's fault that we don't have free lunches for everybody anymore, that he heard that from a faculty member. Whether my son's being accurate, that was his perception, first of all, is a state thing and a federal thing. It had nothing to do with school district, anything. And my son shouldn't be hearing that from staff members who are saying information that is incorrect. So whatever takes place, I think there needs to be a better system for you all to get direct information back from faculty and staff, whether that's through a survey, whether that's through committees, meetings, et cetera. But I'm also hoping that people stop spreading all of the rumors and reactionary stuff to things that aren't necessarily even true. We should be getting information first. That's it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jody Faro and I live at 911 Park Avenue. I would first like to say to the ladies back there that I have a September 9th birthday and it was not questioned, just to let you know. It is not a policy that has been enforced repeatedly and uniformly.
That being said, I have to come up here because there's been a lot to be said about rumors and also too about the eight fights. And I appreciate what Heather said about, I appreciate if you would check your numbers because I've personally been forwarded by my child in the middle of the school day at least eight fight videos. And I cannot tell you how utterly upsetting that is. So I'm going to try and read my thing. I have four sons in this district, 3rd and 5th grades at Zane North, 7th grade at the middle school, and 9th at the high school. I have continuously served on the Zane North PTA board for the last nine years and I've also served on the middle school PTA board along with Kara and multiple other people. As a result of this volunteerism, I have had the good fortune to form trusted relationships with staff and administrators in nearly every single one of the schools, not just at Zane North, but all of the elementary schools, okay? I have also had a front seat to the perspective of students at every level of this district through my own children and through their friends. And my level of concern regarding the high school, specifically the leadership in our district overall, is at fever pitch. I think everyone will agree that changing the culture and the climate in our high school to be one where every student feels welcomed, valued, and a part of the community is the top concern right now. I personally, along with many of my fellow CMS, PTA members, again Kara Boiler included, have attended so many meetings, had conversations with various different groups, our administrators, the Woodland administrators, any single student who is willing to talk to us, as well as any other community members, grownups, adults, anyone, in a hopeful effort to gain understanding as to what has been going on, hear the exact experience of those who have been affected by these issues, and learn what changes might be meaningful to them and how our PTAs can support the efforts to force these changes because I do think these changes need to be forced. We cannot just take a backseat and say, okay, these sound amazing, awesome, let's let it go because it needs to be forced to happen. But each conversation which I have taken part has had a resounding theme, which is a gross lack of leadership at our highest level and complete ignorance of many of our school board members as to the daily status of our high school. It is getting increasingly difficult to stay committed to being a, sorry, to being a part of any hopeful change, given our superintendents, our school board presidents, and our school vice presidents' ongoing actions, which can be summarized as deflection, strong-arming, and fully contributing to utter chaos in the school right now. I personally called our vice president of the school board and I, sorry, and I'm going to say later in here that I love you all personally and stuff, and I apologize, but I'm emotional about what's going on right now. I called him last Wednesday afternoon in an absolute rage, and again, I apologize, Matt, because I was a little hot-headed right then. But I got not the first, not the second, but the third fight video that I had gotten that week. And this is not a safety environment for anyone, for anyone, not just for my kids. And I clearly stated to Matt, my call is not out of fear for my own child's safety, but I am angry that our high school is out of control. Any functional learning has ground to a halt. I also expressed my anger that we've created what is, I would call a safe space for physical violence. We are now requiring teachers to physically restrain students. And I will tell you, every video that I have gotten is an adult wrestling a child to the ground while kids go like this and laugh hysterically. This is not good for anyone. I also questioned to Matt, the board and Dr. McDowell's leadership specifically because they failed to provide a clear, truthful response after that community forum, which, I'm sorry, I'm a lawyer, like, oh, there was a lot that happened at that forum that really should have been immediately addressed because there was clear information that was in our possession at that time. Instead, the lack of any thoughtful communication in the two weeks following that meeting allowed misinformation to swirl, distrust and anger to grow, and created an even greater divide amongst the entire school community. I would also note that of the 8th grade at Zane North, I have a 7th grader, but of all of his friends, I do not know a single one who is coming to our high school because of this. Our board VP promised me that he would take my concerns to the rest of the board and I really do appreciate that, Matt, because you did bring it up here and I appreciate what everybody said, but I'm really sorry, I don't think that the accounting of the fights are accurate. Things that I would ask would be, in comparison to years past, how many times in years past were multiple students involved in one fight? How many times in years past were the police actually called to the school? How many times do we have a shelter in place as a result of this stuff? It did not affect just my high schooler, it affected my middle schooler. And my cousin's daughter was hysterical.
Excuse me, Ms. Farrell, the time's up.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know we had a time limit. Everybody else seemed to have spoken quite a lot. Well, I will close because one other did. She, Brenda got to speak a little bit longer. We will not have any progress regarding the race and equity and inclusion issues, which we need.
I'm sorry, but in fairness to everyone else, I'm going to need to stop you because everyone had a five-minute time limit.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maggie Jamieffski and I live at 258 Woodlawn Avenue. I'm going to mention the positive parts of my remarks because I have no doubt that there
are so many wonderful things happening in our school. Just this past week, I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for the new wellness center, a wonderful new addition to the middle school and high school, but by no means a full solution to the mental health crisis we're seeing in those schools. I attended the superintendent advisory parent meeting where open dialogue about various topics was encouraged. And with the help of CPEG, I set up a wonderful resource table of age-appropriate books to celebrate and educate the Tatum School on neurodiversity. The real reason I am up here is because I care about the student, safety, staff safety, and staff retention. How many of you on the board go into work knowing that there's a chance to break up a fight? How many of you go into work each day expect to get in the middle of teenagers fighting? How many of you have gone into work and witnessed violence or seen a person get taken to the hospital via ambulance because of the fighting? And with all due respect, eight fights this year is really hard to swallow. I'm not sure how much faith I put in that number. I work in healthcare and clinical research. I will never pretend to know what working in education is like, but I know what an unpleasant workplace is and I can't imagine what these teachers are going through. This week, I started researching middle school and high schools for my 10-year-old. The thought of not sending her to my high school, to my husband's high school, to my mom's high school is breaking my heart. Seeing the environment the kids are trying to learn in or these teachers are trying to teach in seems like we're setting them up for failure. The board sets policies, budgets, and oversees the superintendent, and that was made clear at the last BOE meeting. I think that it's important to point out the scope of work and the responsibility the board has. But it's also worth pointing out that the policies the board writes and enforces should have input from the participants themselves. Policies need to ensure that students have a stable environment in which to learn and teachers have a stable environment to teach. As a community member, I often have questions about the procedures and how they're developed. Do you take into consideration the students and the teachers' point of view when creating them? I've been doing my due diligence. Before coming up here and speaking to you all, I've been talking to teachers and staff before assuming the worst about the high school. And I also wonder how many of you are up here grasp the scope of the environment of the high school. Anytime during the last couple of board meetings when someone mentions any negative topic, the answer has been the wellness center. The wellness center is going to be a magical cure for all of our issues in our high school. No doubt that this will be super beneficial, but under no circumstance should we think this is the answer to all of our problems. What is the path? What are the goals? I really appreciated the presentation this evening. Restorative practice seems like it leaves a lot up to interpretation of the policies and I'm not sure how that's going to play out. And the fact that the training is not actually mandatory for staff is questions that I have. I've yet to see anything in the last couple of months that have made me want to send my children to the high school, fearing that we will lose more great teachers. I hope the board takes safety and retention seriously and sees how the community is begging for a positive change. Thank you.
[applause]
Moving on to section 17, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Submoved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.